Hello, good evening.
All right, all right, sounds like we got a full board here. We have a pretty full agenda tonight as well, so with that said, let's start off with our pledge of allegiance. You get the, you get the meeting going. All right, thirty after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. So, starting off again, we are still currently under guidelines for virtual meetings. So with that said, we are, we are still hanging out at our own place and holding these meetings virtually. Public comments, again as a reminder, will be accepted in written form only, so we will not be taking written comments tonight. They can be emailed into either the school board at schoolboard@squimschools.org or T Norman, Tracy Norman, at tnorman@squimschools.org. And see, we will, if, if you're here participating as a guest, I would just ask that you mute your mic and disable your video, and also just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded today, so those are our, those are our stipulations for our current meeting. Hopefully, at some point, we'll be able to venture back to more of a social distance, face-to-face meeting, but we'll see when that, when that time comes. We got a little while before our next meeting anyway, so we'll see how that works out. Next up, let's see if we can, let's get a reading of our vision and mission statement. Director Stauffer, you care to take care of that for us today?
Sure, thank you. Vision: Our community inspires and prepares each student to thrive. Mission: In connection with our community, the Squim School District empowers staff to inspire hope and provide flexible, innovative learning opportunities in a safe and respectful environment, so each student thrives.
All right, thank you so much for sharing that. Okay, so on we move here, so first up, we would like to, we're gonna have a a recognition for our senior board representative, Peyton Stern, who was been a wonderful asset to our board over the last two years, and we had the opportunity of hearing from her at our prior meeting, and, and at a lot of our meetings over the last couple of years, and I just want to lead off by saying again, and I think we all expressed our appreciation at the last time when she spoke and talked about the the current situation, and how it's been taking classes from home and all that, and but again, just from the, from the board, I'd like to say thank you again very much for your participation on the board, Peyton. You've been such an asset to, to the board, you've been an asset to the district, to, to the students as well, in, in all your advocacy and everything that you've done. And we just want to thank you and wish you well in your future moving on. With that said, we also have a presentation to Peyton, and I will turn that over to Dr. Clark to finish up with that person, presentation.
I'll unmute here. Thank you very much, Director Gibson, and I want to echo everything that Director Gibson and other board members have said. I think my only regret, Peyton, would be that I only got to spend one year with you, and, and some of the board members got to spend two. I, I said the other day that I've had several student board reps, and you're every bit as good as any of them. You've impressed me with your thought process and the way you've not, not been afraid to speak out, and you've always done it with a great attitude, and, and I watch you on campus. I watch you interact with your peers, and that's the one thing that will, that I will carry with me in regards to you, Peyton, is, is the positive attitude that you've presented to your peers, the school board, the school district, and your community. I congratulate you on that. I thank you for that. And I think Tracy has the picture, virtual picture of our gift. Can you bring that up, please, Tracy?
We, we have it up there.
Okay, it's in, it's in the corner of mine. I guess I, I need to make it bigger. Okay, I did, I was able to accomplish that. Peyton Stern, with sincere appreciation for your leadership and contributions serving the Squim School Board 2018, 2020, it's a nice clock. I hope you can put that in a place in your dorm room in Baylor, at Baylor, and we wish you well as you take on other challenges in life. Thank you again.
This is so great. Thank you guys so much. It's been such an honor to have served on the board the past two years. It's been a lot of fun, and I've learned like a crazy amount, so thank you all so much, and I have, I have little goodies for all of you from what I can see you guys.
Well, thanks again, Peyton, and again, all the best to you and your future endeavor at Baylor there, and look forward to, you know, hearing and, and watching you grow into the amazing person that we know that you're gonna become, just based on everything that you've accomplished here at Squim School, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So, next up, we have, so Dr. Clark and I had a phone call a little over a week ago, or early last week, and talking about a couple of agenda items, and I think both of us at the same time were about to say the same thing, and so in light of just, you know, the current concerns that have been going on across our country with racial issues, and the, the wonderful protests that have been going on and marches within our own community, we felt that it would be important for the board to put a statement together just regarding our thoughts and, and around, around racism. So we have a draft agenda here, and I want to thank Director Ku for for, for leading off and putting, putting it into some eloquent words, a little I had, I had asked Director Ku if he, he could use some of his writing skills to put some ideas on paper here, and then we can, we can look at these and discuss them. I'm a little more a shoot-from-the-hip-heart kind of speaking person when it comes to writing, not my forte, but Director Ku has done a pretty good job of this, and if you don't mind, I think I'm just gonna read through this, if that sounds okay, and then everybody has this on their agenda, and we can have some discussions around this as well. So, "As our community grieves for the senseless killing of George Floyd and other recent tragic events, a groundswell of support for citizens of all colors has turned that grief into action. In addition to peaceful demonstrations that have taken place, hard questions are being asked by all of us, and our ingrained behaviors are being challenged as to whether or not they passively extend systemic racism and injustice. The Squim School Board stands in solidarity with our community by recognizing the shameful legacy of racism in our country, and we are determined to review our district and programs to ensure that equity for each and every student is achieved. We know we have work to do to close the equity gaps that exist for students of color and those who come from under-resourced households. We recognize the importance of our relationship with local law enforcement agencies, and are grateful most for the ongoing collaboration with the Squim Police Department. Together, we have partnered to provide school resource officers that are a part of our district family and work hard to keep our students safe by remaining vigilant in our schools and building trust with our students and staff alike. Thank you, Squim Police Department, for your service and commitment to our schools and community. We know that the path to true equity is difficult, and that racism remains even within our beloved community, but the Squim School District is dedicated to pursuing a learning environment that provides each student with the best resource, resources they deserve, regardless of the social status or color of their skin. You have our unyielding commitment to work towards this righteous pursuit. Injustice anywhere is a thread to, threat to justice everywhere, Dr. Martin Luther King." So that is what has been put together. And, Dr. Clark, I don't know if you want to join in the discussion here?
And, and thank you, Director Gibson, and thank you, Director Ku, for putting pencil to paper. I think this was an extremely good start. But what I see as this statement is I see us looking through this, perhaps doing some word spitting. This is where I'm coming from, some word smithing, maybe some editing, maybe some additions, and that through the period of time at our next board meeting, adopting this as our state, as our statement. I, I think we do need to take a little time to digest and understand that it, that our statement meets all the expectations that we have for it, so and I, I liked this. I, just a couple things that I would, I would take a glance at, and this would be, you know, something that we would put on our website and to move forward from there. That's what I would think. I would ask the other board members if they had any opinions on it as well.
Great, thank you. And I know in, in some of the conversation as well, I'll just kind of lead off a little bit that, you know, one of the things that I, on a personal note, that I, I would like to just make a good, good, strong statement regarding the fact that racism and hatred and in any format will not be tolerated by the Squim School Board. And, you know, in, in some sort of language around that. And, and I think we've touched upon this in, in this way, but, but I, I think moving forward, you know, for me, something of a definite, strong statement in that regard is something as well. I'll, I'll venture back, so we'll, we'll, we'll do a roll call conversation, just to get some thoughts from, from the crowd, and start back off with Director Ku, who, who, again, thank you for putting this together on, on short notice.
Well, thanks, Brandino, and I, I was happy to do it, and obviously, when you called, the words were already in my mouth in terms of, you know, what, what we were thinking. And I've shared with you, so why not share it in a public meeting? You know, I'm, I'm generally skeptical of, you know, broad statements and, and things that, you know, may not, I don't know, people may say, or one may say it to feel good about themselves, but I recognize too the position we're in as elected, you know, public servants in this community, and the importance of raising our voice in what I think is a critical moment in our community, and certainly throughout the country, so I was certainly happy to assist wherever I could. I emailed you some ideas as far as how, you know, some, this can be even more inclusive. But I agree with your, your stance about, you know, cleaning things up. I apologize to my English teachers of yore and, in my run-on sentences. I recognize that about myself. But that aside, I, I like your stance of a very definitive statement of non-tolerance of racism and all its forms, and appreciate your leadership in developing the statement and getting it out there to our community.
Great, thank you. Director Jeffries.
Yeah, I like the, I like the statement. Thanks, Brian. Thank you, Brandino. Yeah, I liked, I liked that we gave a strong support for the peaceful demonstrations and what they mean, but we also gave strong to the Squim Department and what they mean to us. I think that was very important. And I very much appreciate the use of, in this document versus equality. If you use, if you do some searching, the difference between equity and equality, difference in definitions, so I really appreciate the equity statement and using that terminology. And I'm not gonna try to do too much word smithing on this. I think it's pretty good as it stands, so I appreciate all the hard work, and I think it it accurately reflects what many, many, many school districts and across the nation have expressed, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jeffries. Interesting on the equity, equality, that discussion definitely was had. And I know Director Ku had made statement when he, when he forwarded this over, because that is, and I know that that's a, that's a definite focus for us as well regarding, and you've, you've brought up on many terms as far as a full-on equity statement, and I, and I think this goes a long way to, to beginning that as well, so thank you, thank you, Larry. Director Stauffer.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Director Ku, for putting the pen to paper. I think this, I agree with Director Jeffries there, making that strong statement. WASDA has a good, strong statement on their website, and there was a lot of work on that last year. And so it, for us, we have a duty and responsibility to have that out there and be out in front of all of this. I, again, especially like the interaction with our local police department, Squim Police Department, because we've done a lot of great work with them in partnership, and I know that they, they care and are committed to our kiddos, and, and we've had a very good relationship, so it's important to have that in there, and the, making sure with the equity statement over equal. You know, we have several policies already out there, but it's, it's more impactful to have one statement, especially in this day and age with all the events that are occurring. We need to be out front of this and set the example for our community also. And that's what I have right now, so thank you.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Director Stauffer. Uh, Dr. Pickens.
Yes, also, thank you, Director Ku, for putting this together. Second, or, or third, I would say, about statements stressing the importance of equity. I also think it's important, and I'm glad it's pointed out, that, that we're also talking about systemic racism as well, because racism can take many forms, and I think as, as I continue my, my path of education on racism, this is, these are things that I'm trying to become aware of, that what, what folks traditionally think of as, as racism may, it may be a lot broader than that, and I think that's important as we continue this journey, and I appreciate your words. Director Gibson, about, about just the, the no tolerance for any racism, and I think that's a firm stand that we should take as a board, so thank you.
Wonderful. Thank, thank you, everybody, for that, and again, appreciate all the work on this as, as we move forward and just make our thoughts and statements on, on this current situation. Anything else you'd like to add, Director Clark, or Dr. Clark?
The one thing that I, you know, I agree and champion everything every board member has said about this, the one thing that I also do want to point out, and I, I appreciate you making the comment in there about under-resourced families. And that is, that is a big equity issue in our community, in addition to individuals of color, and that we have to make sure our programs, especially as we move forward this fall, and are considering a hybrid model with some virtual learning, that we're providing an equity for all of our students, whether they be students of color, whether they be under-resourced students, on and on and on, and that we provide the best quality education for every single student in, in the Squim School District. And I, I do want to make a little bit of a special note about the under-resourced families, and I appreciate that being included in this document.
All right, thank you. I guess, I guess, before we move on, I guess my question just would, would be from, from the chair is, I mean, do we, do we feel that there needs to be much word smithing to this?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You know, small, small, just detail that, that came up, and I, I, I was just looking at the third paragraph, and I know that, obviously, I, I agree with the third paragraph about our, our collaboration with the, the Squim Police Department. However, I do know that our, our school district serves a broader area than just that of what Squim School District or Squim Police Department encompasses. So, so I don't know if we need to think about the way that's worded, if we should, if, if that needs to be broadened to our relationship with Kalalem Sheriff, or just, just a general thought.
Okay, thank you, and I guess my, my thoughts too, and, and, and I'm fine with that. I think that this is a great step forward, and, and and it's, it is, it is in its draft format, but I just want to, you know, make sure that the, the community realizes, and I think that they do, especially those in attendance today, that we, 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 we do have a statement to make, and that we are completely, you know, opposed to racism in any format, and that we understand the need for making sure that we're providing equity to, to all those within our district. And so I guess that was, that was kind of more where my question, my question was, and, and I'm good with the word smithing. I, I just really felt that it was important for us to make some sort of a beginning statement at this time, at this board meeting, and, and not letting that ride out too long, but spending some time with word smithing, make sure this is exactly what we want. I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
You know, Director Gibson, a thought on that too, because I guess, maybe selfishly, I don't know what the right term is. I'm feeling an urgency for us to, to make a strong statement, and, I mean, I personally, granted, obviously, I've been close to this document, but I would feel comfortable, you know, deferring to the executive team to finish it through, unless others object and would like to see it back here in its final form. As I'm thinking through this, yeah, we, we don't have the ability to really do a virtual toss-around without violating OPMA, so being respectful of that, but I also not sure, I don't know, I, I guess I'm pushing back a little on waiting until the next meeting versus deferring to you and our vice chair to see this through.
Chair.
Yes.
I'm, I'm on that same page there. I have a brother, it prefer that it get out sooner. Looking at our next meeting, that's a little ways off, and the only thing that, say, popped out, and this popped out to my English major daughter, and she, under school resource officers, and it says that, she suggested that it say "who" instead of that. But otherwise, I'm ready, I would take, we'd be happy to vote on it to take, make a live however we can do that.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Director Jeffries.
Well, I agree with Brian and Jim. I think the sooner the better, and I agree with Eric. Most of our citizens do live in, and so the county sheriff, even though they're not our CTO, we have one school that's in the county, not in the city, and I think some way to acknowledge our partnership with the county as well. I'm sure there are other law enforcement agencies, but those two in particular are the ones that serve our, our citizens. So, but I am in favor of trying to do this some way as quickly as possible.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah, yes, go ahead, Director.
Maybe in the interest of moving forward, I'll, I'll take a stab at this, but push back if I miss anything. I'd like to move that the board authorizes the chair and the vice chair to collaborate with the superintendent on any final editing of this statement to be distributed or posted on behalf of the school board, and I'll, I'll leave it at that in the motion.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to allow the executive team with Dr. Clark to edit the current document to distribute as quickly as possible. Any discussion on that?
The only thing I would add that really didn't belong in the motion was, you know, I've sent you a follow-on thought, unsolicited, I'll note, from over the weekend, and then just affording my colleagues the same opportunity in the next day or two, in case there's anything else that comes to it, and I personally appreciate running it by anyone that has an affinity towards English and literature.
Absolutely, yes. Any other discussion?
No, I'm good. Let's make a live.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, and thank you for that as well, you know, and, and I think that, yeah, definitely getting this word smithed and done and, and posted this week is, is an important factor to make sure that that happens, and appreciate that support there. So with that said, if no further discussion, all those in the, the motion, and second is to allow for the executive team with Dr. Clark to finish the word smithing of this document to make it go live. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, any opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, okay. And then if, if possible, yes, as, as part of that discussion, if any of you have any thoughts, feel free to shoot them our way, and we'll get those done, and Director Ku has, has done that as well, and over the weekend, and I'd like to have this potentially done and completed by midweek. All right, next up, we have a presentation on the Dungeness Virtual Academy by our own Principal Vince Rucabini.
Good evening. Tracy, can you, am I audio available to you?
You are up. We got you, Vince.
Awesome, thank you. Before I get going, I just want to disclose, this is my first virtual presentation, and so rookie mistakes may take place, but I want to thank Tracy because she is driving the presentation, so together, we hope to tell you guys the story of Dungeness Virtual School. And so as I get going, I want to thank Dr. Clark and certainly the board directors for supporting this exciting new opportunity for the kids of our community. It couldn't come at a more opportune time. And my goal tonight is to share with you kind of the story of how DVS came to be, and sort of the stat, give, also provide with you a status update. So Tracy, go ahead, please. Okay, it's a team, teamwork on the slides. I love it. And so in the fall of just last year, Dr. Clark approached me and asked that I start researching and Um, so in the fall of just last year, Dr. Clark approached me and asked that I start researching and understanding it became part of our school improvement plan, online school alternatives. And so, uh, first thing that I did was put together a group of amazing professionals. That was, uh, Aaron Fox, Isaac Rappelj, Sheldon Hittka, Taylor Thorson and myself. And, uh, we started researching and understanding existing online programs, online program requirements. And, uh, it created just a ton of questions for us. And it led us to, Tracy, next slide, please. It led us to OSPI's, uh, online alternative learning, uh, experience website. And it was filled with all kinds of amazing information related to RCWs, um, WACs, uh, policies, online course providers. It just gave us a ton of information. And so, uh, Tracy, go ahead and go to the next slide, please. And so what we did from a strategy standpoint is we put all of these into big categories. Uh, the categories were single district processes, multi-district, which is a, uh, collaboration with another district. Actually a partnership, uh, the par- policies and, uh, RCWs, the actual online application process, uh, approved schools and programs and approved course providers. And in these six subjects, we just began studying them and breaking them off, each one of them, uh, individually. Uh, and we still, through that process, had so many questions more than we had answers. And, uh, even with, uh, we even had an opportunity to do a, uh, virtual conference with some of the folks at OSPI and they were kind of walking us through different processes, um, that other districts have gone through as well. Go ahead, Tracy. Thank you. So after, um, much research and lots of collaboration with OSPI and also, um, in other districts, one of the, the, our greatest concerns was, uh, all the compliance issues that have to take place in any kind of an ALE program. Uh, there are many. And in researching, connecting with other districts, what we found is many districts utilize the multi-district application process and connect with what's called Spokane Virtual Academy. Um, and Spokane Virtual Academy is all over the state of Washington. Uh, one district, for example, was Bellingham, but I spent a great deal of time, uh, connecting with another administrator that partners with, um, Spokane's Virtual Academy. Basically, it's the kind of process where they send, they have the courseware, they have the teachers, they do all the compliance issues, they do everything for you. Um, you can offer your district specific branding, they more or less send you a brochure and you would write SWIM on it and it would say SWIM Virtual Academy and everything is taken care of on their end. So much so, they were so excited to talk with us, they actually sent the six to seven page documents and all we had to do was have Dr. Clark's and Darlene's signature on it and boom, we would have been up and running and there was some other administrative process that had to take place. But as a team, we were, we were convinced, okay, this is the way to go. There are several very, very wonderful school districts across the state that partner with them and we're going to be in compliance, our kids will have an online opportunity and it, it's Washington State credits, Washington State teachers, and it was going to be up and running. And so we were pretty excited about that and we were about ready to present that information to cabinet when I had this opportunity to attend, um, the WALA conference. Go ahead, Tracy, please. And the WALA conference is the Washington Association of Learning Alternatives. And it was here that, um, I had a chance to collaborate and network and just connect with online and ALE programs uh, from all over the state. It was an absolutely wonderful, wonderful area experience. And I met the executive director, Mr. Brad Sprague, and Brad has been the, uh, um, executive director of WALA for a very, very long time. And he also has the distinct, um, I had the distinct opportunity of building one of the very first online schools in the Federal Way School District in the early 2000s. Um, and he had this one last session on Saturday morning that was called building an online program from the ground up. I testered him as much as I could to get as much information as possible even before that, but he, he held me at bay. But he kept sharing with me the, what I'm going to share with you was the same model that was used in a district not too far from you, I think Port Angeles, that just started their very own. Um, and during the, during his presentation, yes, all the ALE compliance issues came up, but he kept talking about, who do you want your, the students in your community connecting with? Who do you want them making relationships with? Yes, you can have a ready-built program, but the students in your community want to be able to connect with your teachers that they know, that they run into and are available to them and have your mission and your vision taking place. I love that we read that tonight because that's ours. That's what we build over the course of creating our strategic plan and that's what we want for our students. And so I came back absolutely energized and thrilled and I started to share with my team that whole experience. And it didn't take us long at all to say, holy cow, we need to regroup here and, and do something different. Uh, go ahead, Tracy, please. But then, almost at the same time, um, this thing called COVID-19 took place. And I was like, oh no, how are we gonna, uh, do this virtually and, and connect and build this amazing thing for our community while we're all away? Well, we did it. We did it over emails and Zoom meetings. Thank you, Aaron Fox, and folks just giving their two cents. And a lot of collaboration with, uh, Brad Sprague from WALA and also from the Port Angeles School District. So I really like to thank Cindy Crumb. She helped a great deal with us. And we created a, a mission, a vision and began exploring who the best course providers were and provided, uh, update to, um, the cabinet at the district office. And we did a, a fun naming process with, uh, with our students. We quickly learned that Dungeness Online Academy was not a good idea. Something about DOA wasn't a good idea for our, for our students. And so, um, there's a little bit of, um, internet humor for you there. Um, and we had, uh, our multimedia class. As we still in the process of doing some student graphic development for us. So go ahead, Tracy. So with that, we recently just completed the, uh, OSPI Single District Online Application. Uh, that's been submitted to OSPI. Uh, my understanding is about a week or so before we hear back from them about, uh, the process of our application. We have selected, uh, our courseware platform. It's called Odysseyware. I'll talk about that here in a few minutes. But behind the scenes, there has been a absolute ton of work by Maria Sevold, Maria Rorgen. And then I've received so much assistance and guidance and support from Assistant Superintendent Mon. I just want to express huge appreciation to these three folks because the efforts it's taking to, uh, build this is far more than just an application with OSPI. There's a lot of behind the scenes work. Um, and as you can tell on the screen there, we've got, uh, a, a rolling kind of promo that's happening, uh, on the website for folks and we're really excited. Go ahead, Tracy. So Odysseyware is the courseware that we have, um, decided to go with. And there you can see the cost and the 20 licenses that we have, um, purchased. We've already posted a 1.0 FTE to, um, be the teacher of this. Uh, it's going to be located in the district office right next door to SOS. The webpage is under construction right now. Um, and probably one of the most significant things that I think that we've done is we have a roster of students, um, at the district office that have withdrawn to other online programs in the last year or so. And we've already reached out to all those students, uh, via phone call and have encouraged them to take a look at our program, uh, or our Dungeness Virtual School as an opportunity for them. So we're very excited. It's a collaborative effort. It's taken a legion of folks to kind of get it off the ground. There's a lot more that has to be done, um, but we're excited to offer this new learning opportunity for students. Okay, Tracy, one more. Questions?
All right. Uh, thank you, Vince. Uh, we're excited about this. Uh, um, I have to, I have to say, I had to chuckle though, uh, when, when you were saying with the COVID-19 and how do we just, how do we figure out how to do a virtual program virtually? Well, there you go. That, that's a great way to start. Figure out what, uh, how that all works. So appreciate all the work. Uh, that's a great team that you had there. Um, and I'm gonna work our way down the line for some questions. Director Ku?
Great. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Principal Rucabini for the presentation. And I appreciate your, uh, your comment too about the, uh, the name change over the period of time. So it's good to know how y'all landed there. I guess, um, you know, I have a lot of questions about this, uh, but I, I think a lot, a lot of them, uh, will be answered as I continue to learn about it, uh, through the resources y'all share. Uh, but I'm super excited about yet another pathway for students. And I'd be lying if I didn't admit that even in my own house, um, alternative pathways have come forward as a topic of discussion, uh, from my FTEs. Um, I don't think they have a realistic picture of, uh, what a robust, um, alternative pathway looks like versus, uh, you know, what, what are, what we've, uh, had to endure and kind of a drop of the hat notice with COVID. Um, but in that same breath, I want to give a shout out to our, our teachers and their ability to pivot has been, uh, nothing short of outstanding and, um, pretty inspiring to, to watch. Um, I guess the, the main question I have has to do with, um, you know, the elephant in the room, which is funding, uh, which is tied to our headcounts. Is there any, uh, I guess deviation between, uh, uh, students in flesh and blood in one of our classrooms, uh, headcount or funding versus a student that chooses the virtual, uh, path for next school year and beyond?
Students that are in, let's say, brick and mortar are, are called basic education students and students that are enrolled virtually, like they would be in DVS, are called ALE students and the actual funding formula and mechanism, I would have, I would refer to Darlene for what the difference would that be? She'd be able to tell us that very specifically. But ALE funds are separate from basic education funds.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I think that's, yeah, I think that's all I have. Sorry for the awkward silence.
Okay. Like, uh, is there more there? All right. Uh, Director Jeffries?
Yeah. I think, you know, really exciting. I think that's something that's been long needed in SWIM and around the country. So I, I look forward to seeing, um, this program, uh, be successful and grow. Back in the day, in a far, far away universe, I was an early adopter of integrating technology in the classroom. So I have an affinity for this kind of stuff. But I've been out of the classroom long enough that I don't have the expertise, but I'm looking forward to it. Yeah, I'm glad you went to the OSPI, OSPI site. I've been there. I've been looking at, um, Odysseyware and looking at, uh, who they are and what they are. And, um, I think, uh, they're probably as good a choice as any, given, um, all of them have critiques, of course, but, uh, I think it's, um, a good, a good choice. I do have some quis- um, questions. In this process, normally when we adopt curriculum and that sort of thing, we, we do the, um, IMC, the Instructional Materials Committee, vets all this stuff and studies it. Are we more in a pilot phase or, um, how does the IMC fit into, uh, guaranteeing that this is the quality curriculum that we want for our kids?
Thank you. That's a great question. Um, but before I answer that question, I want to back up and, and just share with you the, the recommendation of Odysseyware came from, um, exec, the executive director of WALA, uh, Mr. Sprague. And so that's where it came from. I will be collaborating with, um, Assistant Superintendent Mon regarding the, um, IMC process and, uh, in our first year, whether it's piloting or if there will have to be an actual IMC process early, early in the fall, however we end up timing it, I'll be collaborating with her about that process.
Okay, good. Um, in, in, in reading this, looks like at least to start with, it's more of a retrieval program. First, it looked like CDU over in Port Angeles is more of a, um, broad curriculum ed, broad curriculum choices. Do you see this as basically credit retrieval?
No, no, it's, uh, it, it can be, but this is for, you know, students that want to have their full learning experience online or partially online. Uh, it is not solely a credit retrieval.
Okay. And I noticed we've got a 20, 20 licenses. Does that mean 20 students?
No, the license analogy, think about it as like a parking lot. At any given period of time, there could be 20 students on at one time, but you know, once a student leaves in a half hour or 20 minutes or an hour later, then another student come in.
And if we need to go to 40 or 60, then that's just another, um, we, we need to pay, um, Odyssey, another 16,500 or something like that?
I do not know, um, Odysseyware's breakpoint in terms of, you know, if you needed to add 10 or another 10. Um, my understanding from my collaboration with the folks in, uh, Port Angeles was that they were able to work fine with the number of licenses that they had, which is, this is equivalent. Uh, they're growing a great deal this fall. They're, they're going to move from one teacher in one semester to 2.5 in this upcoming semester. And so my understanding is they're, they're expanding their licenses. But starting off with this number, we feel pretty comfortable. We'll be able to meet the demand of students.
Okay, good. I mean, I'm just trying to, uh, understand all this and even though I was a early adopter in the classroom of integrating technology, now on the school board, I have my, um, responsibility to talk about funding. You know, I know Brian, Director Ku asked some of those questions. If we, uh, if it's just our students, you know, we, we get 20 SWIM high school students, let's say that join in, there's essentially no gain in, but what if we start having students from Port Angeles or Tacoma want to get involved in our program? Do we get extra funding for those people and is that part of the plan?
Students and the funding, um, question that you're asking, uh, I'm going to defer to Darlene and she will have to be able to explain to you, uh, how a ALE student is funded and how that category works different than a basic ed FTE. Um, she has far more knowledge than I do about that. Um, but in terms of, um, the number of licenses, uh, it isn't a cap of the number of students. We could have, you could have, um, as an example, a a student that is taking six of their classes, whether they be a middle school or a high school student, that would be 1.0, a DVS student. You could also have students that are four classes at the brick and mortar, whether that be the middle school or the high school and two classes virtually. Um, 20% or more is the trigger for ALE funding. And so that would be taking, uh, two or more courses.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, there's a lot of questions to be asked. It looks to me like if a student wants to join, uh, DVS, they would have to transfer and become our student. But they would be out of district. So there might be some things there that we have to figure out. So looking at the total costs, um, you know, you know, like you said, there is going to be a lot of behind the scenes, um, tech setup, maintenance, and then we're, have a 1.0 FTE. Is that a new position? So I'm looking at total, total costs with, you know, what these days with, um, funding in, um, dire straits often, you know, how much is this extra is this going to cost us or is it going to cost us extra?
Um, I'll have to, Dr. Clark will have to answer that question for you as to whether this is a new position or existing one. There's been a lot of personnel issues related to, you know, staffing. And so, uh, as to whether or not, you know, SWIM started with, you know, 180 teachers this year and next year, or whether we have 180 or 182, I couldn't answer that question for you. Um, in terms of, uh, the total cost of the program, it's, it's still pretty new to come up with that, that exact number. Uh, the, it's 1.0 FTE and the software costs. And, uh, we believe we can have as many as 40 full-time equivalent students that one FTE could, uh, manage because there's a great deal of, um, requirements in terms of written student learning plans and how often you have to monitor those plans with students. So, but that could come in a lot of different forms, whether that's a one, a full-time So, but that could come in a lot of different forms, whether that's a one, a full-time DVS student or partially enrolled type students.
Well, good. Yeah, I can see that it gets a little bit complicated. So we're going to have to dive down. One last thing is, uh, we talked about it this last discussion is the equity issues and equal and equity access for the students. Online learning takes, um, devices and it takes internet connection. And, um, is, you know, there may be students that can do that easily and there may be some students that want to do DVS, but they can, they can't access it. They don't have the wherewithal to, um, connect to the internet and be successful. So hopefully we'll have some good plans for those students down the line.
Um, just, just to address that, um, uh, Assistant Superintendent Mon and I have already started preliminary conversations about ensuring that, that your very point is being addressed.
Good. Well, sorry I had so many questions, but, um, I think it's a really exciting program and I really, um, you know, just, just let us know how it's going and, um, I assume we may have to take some votes down the line, but if we can support you and, um, let us know. And, um, I would probably be one of those type of persons that would like to get online and, um, see what the students see and, and give it a, a try just to get a better feel for the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds great.
Okay, thank you, Director Stoffer.
Yes, uh, thank you, Vince and your team there. I think right now this is a perfect time to be rolling this out. I've been sitting in on the, uh, back to school task force and as we know, what school will look like back in December is far, far different and will be far, far different in September. And, uh, this gives us another option. Um, I know prior to COVID-19, it's been, uh, online schooling has been, um, successful in several school districts for that other pathway. So, uh, I thank you for your work and, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Stoffer. Uh, Director Pickens.
I, um, just, just a question, a couple of questions. You reached, uh, you mentioned that you reached out to, um, students that were already enrolled in, um, other online programs. Do you know about how many, how many students you reached out to?
Yes, we contacted 45 students.
Forty-five, okay. And so the idea with that, and this sort of relates to Director Jeffries' questions, I think the idea with that is, is we're not necessarily, um, targeting students that are, that are currently enrolled in school, but we want to bring those that are, that are enrolled in other schools back to our district. Is that, is that the idea there?
Yes, yes, yes.
And the, the 1.0 FTE position, um, is that going to be, that's a certificated teaching position? Is that correct? Okay. And I saw that it's, uh, from grade six through 12. And I wondered if there were, um, obviously I've, I've had a few conversations with Dr. Clark about this being, you know, working in Port Angeles and, and knowing about their program, looking at this as an opportunity to, to making sure we're capturing that enrollment. So I was curious, uh, I know Port Angeles just recently expanded their program from K to 12. So, um, did we, did we look at that? Is there some advantages of just starting at, at six to 12? Is that something you can speak to?
Yes, our application was, uh, for K-12. Um, but right now we're, three to five is still pending. And so in our process to having to move fully K-12, we will hopefully already be approved from OSPI for that process. But we wanted to get six, 12 nailed down to see how many we, how many students we were able to get into DVS and, and then have a discussion about three, five depending on our numbers. But our application was a K-12 application.
Okay, excellent. And then, um, one other advantage, if I'm not mistaken, is, um, where if somebody was enrolled in another, um, online school, still, still living in our district, but another online school, they wouldn't necessarily be able to participate in extracurricular activities and sports and that sort of thing. But if a student is online and ours on DVS, they will be able to participate in all extracurricular activities. Is that correct?
That is correct. And that's what we're really excited about.
All right, all right. Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Okay, a lot of good questions there. Uh, thanks again, Vince, uh, for the presentation. And again, yeah, we're excited about, uh, moving in this direction, uh, which is a positive direction, both for, for the district and also, you know, in, in light of what we've been facing over the last, uh, several months as it has been. Uh, so thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, next up, we have, uh, the approval of our, uh, minutes for our June 1st workshop and regular meeting.
So moved. Director Stoffer.
I will second that.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Uh, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, any opposed same sign? All right, uh, where are we at here? Hang on, I gotta move to the other screen. All right, next up, uh, any changes to, um, the actual agenda at this time?
Ms, Mr. Chair, did, did we just do the workshop minutes or do we do regular minutes yet?
We did those as, as a packet.
Okay, excellent. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
No changes to the agenda.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, great. Um,
Mr. Chair, move to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you. Any second?
Second.
All right.
Director Stoffer.
Okay, um, any discussion? All right, uh, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed same sign? All right, next up, we have, um, our consent agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and we got a second from, uh, Director Jeffries. Uh, any discussion?
Um, go ahead.
Eric.
Go ahead, Director Pickens.
Um, just wanted to see if we can, I guess it'd be the whole item five, personnel classified and certificated changes. See if we can move that to the regular agenda instead of the consent agenda.
So we have a request to move, uh, item 5.05 from consent agenda to regular agenda.
Think that require a motion and I'm, uh, happy to second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to move 5.05, uh, to the, uh, from the consent agenda to regular agenda. Uh, any discussion on that? Hearing none, um, all those in favor of the motion to move 5.05 from consent agenda to uh, regular agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed same sign? Any opposed same sign? Okay, um, with that, uh, a motion to approve the new, is that correct? Consent agenda. I get confused with these sometimes.
Yeah, you're right. The, the motion and, uh, was, was stated and seconded it. So it would require a new motion to move as amended. And I think I spoke over Director Stoffer. My apologies.
That's okay. If you want to go ahead and motion it, I'll second it.
Okay, well, motion as stated.
Okay. All right, sounds like we had a motion and a second on the, uh, amendment or amended consent agenda. Uh, so with that stated, any further discussion on the amended consent agenda?
Um, I would just like to note the donations that were received from, uh, North Olympic Peninsula, um, Anglers Club, Security Services Northwest and the Squim Prairie Garden, um, which, uh, benefiting, um, students and programs at, in our schools. And I just want to extend my appreciation for that.
Yeah, hearty ditto over here, uh, to the donations.
All right, thank you. Director Jeffries, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to extend appreciation to Darlene. Um, I, I looked through the vouchers in particular and I, I sent her email like, well, what's this for? What's that for? And she gets right back to me. I don't question the expenses. I just don't recognize the names or the, uh, acronyms. I'm just curious about where that money goes. I really appreciate that, that she provides that, uh, that service. Thank you, darling.
All right, great. Thank you. Uh, all right, with that said, uh, all those in favor of the, uh, amended consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed same sign? All right. Next up. Okay. Next up, we where are we at here? Let me get this up here. Pull this up myself so I can. So next up, we, uh, is our, um, public comment. We, we are not taking, uh, verbal public comment, but we do have a written public comment that I'd like to read from, uh, math teacher, uh, Carol Harms. And from Carol Harms, Squim High School Math Teacher, I would like to express my support for the adoption of the Carnegie Learning Curriculum for the high school math courses, courses, Algebra, Geometry and Algebra II. This adoption is long overdue and will be an extremely positive step for improving student learning at the high school. Carnegie matches well with the learning standards and process standards for mathematics. The classroom portion allows for students to increase problem solving skills by utilizing meaningful real world problems. The Mafia interactive software allows for more individualization and accountability for students in learning. The software matches to the student's current learning and provides supports. It also provides data feedback to the teacher for use in refining and designing instruction for that student. Thank you for your service on the school board and thank you for, uh, Ms. Harms for, uh, your support, um, on, on that program. Appreciate that. Okay, uh, next up we have, moving on, uh, you know, we don't have our, uh, student reps with us at this time. Um, at this point, we have received just one, uh, completed student application, uh, with a Friday, uh, this week, uh, deadline. So, um, if anybody knows any sophomores out there moving into juniors, um, uh, that are interested, uh, please encourage them to get their, um, applications in so we can, uh, get our interviews done. Okay, uh, next up, we have our regular board communication. Uh, we'll start off with, uh, Director Ku.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, and I appreciate your last comment too, because I've, uh, because I have a sophomore, uh, FTE. I'm, I'm very close to this class, uh, in its own regard. So I'm surprised to hear there's only one, but, um, I'm aware of, um, gosh, five students now that either said they were applying or intended to apply. So, um, I absolutely do not envy, uh, the selection committee on that. And, um, um, I'm also excited about, uh, some of the prospects that are likely headed our way to serve, uh, on the school board. Excuse me, and no, my son is not one of them. He did, he didn't respond to my appeals of wanting to work together to better the world, um, sadly. So I'm, I'm sure he'll change the world in another way. Um, I just wanted to make mention of referendum 90, uh, which folks, uh, may or may not have been following. It will be on the November ballot if I understand that correctly. Uh, and also was a record-setting petition signature submitted. Um, and this is in response to Senate Bill 5395 regarding comprehensive sex education. I bring it up only just to encourage us to keep our eye on that, uh, dialogue and engage as appropriate, uh, in the coming months. Um, I personally do agree with putting, uh, this to the voters, uh, frankly, only for the fact that it, uh, um, capitulates local authority, um, to some degree, uh, minor perhaps, but still, uh, I think it's important for our local voters to have that, uh, voice about it. And for that reason, I definitely support it being on the ballot, but, uh, just encourage us to keep that um, on our radar. Um, I think it's, uh, important to the hearts and minds of a lot of, uh, individuals. And as our dynamic world becomes more so with each passing day, um, I think, uh, we'd be wise to, um, to make sure we're thoroughly engaged with that. Um, I want to close with that. So I will definitely go, uh, to say congratulations to Eric, uh, regarding your recent, uh, election, I think to the regional WEA presidency. Did I get that right?
Yes.
All right.
Equivalent of regional. Yes, I think that's.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Um, sincere, uh, congratulations, but also just a reflection too of my gratitude for having you on the board. Um, I, you know, I, I had and, and admittedly, you know, there remains a healthy skepticism about, um, you know, uh, union leadership, uh, also on the board level. Um, and you and I have spoken about that, so I hope that's not ill received in any way. Um, but I can definitely say with, uh, without question that, um, your perspective, um, especially just over the last, uh, you know, couple of months has been extremely beneficial. And there's been a couple of times where, um, it's, it's really just, uh, it's really just, uh, you know, uh, struck me is how beneficial it has been, um, and seeing things from, uh, a unique perspective. So, uh, I mean that with utmost sincerity. Congratulations. And, um, I am actually pretty optimistic about how that'll enhance, uh, our, our, uh, relationship, uh, regionally moving forward.
Thank you.
And, and I'm also inspired about how you find the time to do all this stuff because I'm only on one elected position. I'm kind of exhausted. Uh, but anyway, uh, just want to close by saying too, uh, thank you, Peyton. Uh, it was so good to hear your voice earlier tonight. I don't know if you're still on the call, but, uh, the rest of y'all can hear me gushing. Uh, just an absolute pleasure to work with, uh, Peyton over the last couple of years. Um, you know, when she came on board, um, I've known, uh, for a number of years through her family and, um, it's just an absolute joy, uh, to see her, uh, you know, the presence on the school board, her voice, uh, her maturation as a young adult. Um, I'm, I'm with you, uh, Director Gibson about, uh, watching her career with certain interests. And, um, I know she's really getting offices and Texas will get her for a little bit, but, uh, hopefully we'll get her back, uh, soon enough. And, uh, just sincere gratitude for her willingness to serve in this capacity because, uh, it certainly is a thankless role at times. And, uh, she did it with excellence. And with that, I have nothing else.
All right, great. Thank you, uh, Director Jeffries.
Yeah, um, I don't know, again, in a prior life, I was involved with, uh, union activities with the NEA and AFT and on the local level at least. I would say congratulations, Eric. I think congratulations are in order. I know that can be a big, important job, so go for it. And, um, I'm looking forward forward how all that comes out because it's, it's a, that, that world of, um, the NEA and AFT and all that, that that means is very important. Let's see, uh, oh yeah, the Carnegie Learning, I will mention that I didn't know much about it. So I did some more investigation and actually did a Mafia, um, online webinar a couple of weekends ago, um, with Sue's son, who is, um, lives in Tahuya, Tahuya, near Belfair, uh, out in the middle of nowhere along the Hood Canal there. And, um, I and a group of teachers from Worcester, Massachusetts were on there and it was very interesting. So I'm, I'm excited about that curriculum and how that, um, getting that going. were on there, and it was very interesting. So I'm excited about that curriculum and how that getting that going. And I did attend the OPA Zoom graduation that they had, and I was really, it was a pleasant, exciting, fun experience to watch the students and Principal Mark Willis and listening to the horns honk. And it was actually a very uplifting, I thought, experience, given the COVID problems. I thought that that went over really well. Some other things that, you know, will come up down the line that we need to talk about maybe is that, you know, back in March, we had an emergency suspension of policies, and we kind of hounded hard around about when that would end. We kind of thought maybe June 19th, and maybe we need to talk about that at soon to see what that means. I did send Brandino and Dr. Clark my ideas for revised Procedure 1250, which involved the representative, student representative problem, you know, risk that some of us perceived. And equity. I think we need a strong equity policy, which would probably cut and paste some of the terms, some of the phrases that are in the the policy we approved tonight to be put out as soon as possible. But it it needs to expand to all forms of equity that are involved. And I noticed in our strategic plan, we don't really have a strong equity statement, and I would like to maybe see that placed in there somehow. And I've also noticed that the strategic plan isn't written in our in any policy anywhere. It's written up on the board in the boardroom, and it's on the webpage, but it's not, at least I could find in the published policies, it's not in there. So maybe we ought to look at that. And that's some of the things I had to say, and I'm going to follow up on that and pester whoever I need to to see if we can move along on some of those policy changes. Thank you.
And Larry, I would just tell you, it's pronounced Tahola.
I knew I was going to get it wrong, Tahola. And it's out in the middle of nowhere. And this is a math teacher that's been using Carnegie Learning for quite a while. And she went through the Mafia portion of it and how students progress. And, you know, as they progress, they take little quizzes and I don't know, artificial intelligence within Carnegie seems to know if they're making progress or they're not making progress. And if they're not, how can it help them out? So there's a very interesting presentation by Sue Sun of Tahoya, Tahoya. Say that again. How do you pronounce?
Tahoya.
Tahoya. I'm going to go visit there someday.
All right, great. Thank you, Director Jeffries. Director Stoffer.
Yes, thank you. I'm really looking forward to graduation on Friday. I think all the parents are very looking looking forward to it, especially the students. And I know there's a lot of work coordination that's been occurring there, and I send my appreciation to all those that are involved in that. Also, speaking of student reps, both the Chamber of Commerce Board and City Council are looking for student reps. And so Director Koo, if your son is interested in either of those, for the Chamber of Commerce, our executive director has an application, but Peyton was and Aaron Dreyer were the two students there, and both of them are leaving. So we we need two students for there. From there, back to school taps for our second meeting. Lot of information flowing through there. I was very pleased that of the format of aligning the needs under our strategic plan. And so that Dr. Clark, you identified those committees and have established a chair for each of those. And a lot of that, you know, we're just waiting for other information to come in, but so vital be out in front. From there, I think it's very important to get the message out to our families and to the community. And I liked how that was expressed several times. Because that's the next big question out there is what will school look like in September? From there, I know it's listed on the on our agenda on down there about upcoming items of interest. I'll just add it's the General Assembly, so WASD's General Assembly is 24th of September. And this is a new before we had a Legislative Assembly, and then during the General Conference, we had a Delegate Assembly. Well, my fellow with my colleagues will remember it was all combined into one. So on the 24th of September will be the General Assembly. And this is all online also. So both the Legislative Committee and the Resolutions Committee have been spending a little bit of our weekends on virtual, working on what that format would look like. And still don't have that to release, but 24th of September, I will send a link. There's a description of it on the WASD's website, and I'll send a link later. But otherwise, I think that's all I have. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Stoffer. Director Pickens.
Thank you. And just want to want to thank Director Jeffries, Director Koo for mentioning the the recent election, for bringing that up. I it was a difficult decision, and I'm actually with that with that position. I have to I'm not going to be teaching as much, so I'm going down to just teaching halftime. So otherwise, I definitely wouldn't be able to take that on. But I but I appreciate those those encouraging words. And I think it's just important that we, in all capacities that we can, keep fighting for kids. So which is one of the things that inspired me to run. So other than that, just want to stress that we still need to keep an eye on any anything that comes up legislatively as we, which I've mentioned mentioned before, I'm concerned for potential cuts to education, and that is not the direction we need to go. So want to make sure that we that stays on our radar as well. So that's that's all for me.
Great, thank you, Director Pickens. And I'd like to also express my congratulations on that as well. And gratefulness for having you on the board and your perspective, as Director Koo said. Also, just wanted to share that I I did happen to attend the OPA graduation and first time participating in that. Wonderful job put together. It was some great speeches by all six of the graduates that were there. And again, just listening to this, the comments and the speeches by those six graduates and and then, you know, knowing that we've were we're sending Peyton on to college and 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 here Friday, we're going to be seeing a bunch of our other graduates. Our future's in pretty bright hands, I got to say. There were some just amazing speeches that were done at that OPA graduation, and I'm I'm pretty pretty comfortable and pleased with the with where our our future is at with with these youngsters that are taking over and doing a wonderful job. So anyway, that's all I really have. We have a lot a lot still to come here on our agenda. So we'll we'll move on from that. Next up, we have Darlene, our our finance and enrollment.
Okay. I just want to also say congratulations to Eric. And I was watching that because one of my other friends was also running for Olympic Council President. So congratulations, Eric. Great job.
Thank you. And and both folks are running against very highly respected in in from me as well. So there
Yeah, yeah, great. Yeah. So, all right. Well, I can answer a couple of questions from the ALE questions that that Vince gave the presentation for. And so just just an overview of how ALE would work is is that the student allocation for 1.0 FTE is $8,503.15. But because it's an ALE program, one FTE teacher can have 40 to 50 students. It's not like a classroom. So right there, you can see a big difference in what we would receive in apportionment and what we would be paying out towards one teacher. So right there, there's there's a big difference in revenue versus expenditure in the ALE program. So if there were 20 students, you know, our revenue would be about $170,000. If there are 40 students, our revenue would be about $340,000. So just to kind of give you an idea. And I've looked, I brought a bunch of things home, but I couldn't find the quote for the software curriculum. And so but it's it's really not that much for the 20 parking lots. And anyway, so you can kind of see how that would work. There are many more students that can be to one teacher in this model. Onto budget status reports, I have made budget status reports. And our revenues in our general fund are at about 73%. And our expenditures are at about 91 and a half percent. And our total Indian Fund balance right now in general fund is $3,360,321. And it looks like this because, you know, we had our local levy dollars come in in April, and then we have a small apportionment in May. And so it's going to catch up because we're going to pay payroll and accounts payable. And and this is about what it looked like last year at this time. Also, I went back to look at May 2019 budget status reports, just so I could compare. And and they're off just a couple hundred thousand dollars from each other. On the second page of the general fund budget status report, I just wanted to I just wanted to talk about these restricted funds that are listed here. And the first one is the carryover, the 55,715. There'll be a new amount that goes goes there for this next year. And it's based on the carryover that we have to spend first. So if we have any dollars that we get to carry over to next year, which we will, and especially now with COVID, those dollars will be put there. And then as we go through the year, carryover dollars must be spent first, and then that can be updated. The restricted for debt service, that that comes right off of our debt schedule, and that's the money that has to be transferred from general fund for interest to pay for our debt in December and in June. So we, this is the last, the $87,000 for this school year, and that was all done this month. And so that the June 1st payment could be made on time by the County Treasurer's Office. The $400,000 is for other capital projects, and and that's put there so that if there's any any projects that need to be done, and and more projects that, you know, just come up, like we we developed a leak in something, or, you know, something broke, and we have to, you know, replace it, but it's a big cost, then we have that there. We can adjust that next year, but that will always be budgeted so that we always have that little bit that we can move to capital projects to use for some sort of improvement or a big fix if we need to. So our minimum fund balance of 1.555 million, that's that Larry's right, that's at about 4%. And you're welcome, Larry, for trying to get back to answering your questions. And then I didn't get to respond to the second set of questions you had. And that was wondering how our emergency fund or reserve fund has been impacted by the COVID stressors. And so we would all like to see our reserve, you know, go up to at least 5%, but not too much more than that. And I know you're more in the range of 7%, and it's hard to move it there. And I think there's several factors this year that that I'm thankful that we've been able to keep it at the 4%. But I decided to go back and and look at some information for you. I wanted to let you know that when I looked at our apportionment for 1819, and then I looked at our through May, and I looked at our apportionment through May for 1920, we are receiving $377,917 less in 1920 than we did in 1819 in apportionment through May. And so, you know, a lot of that could have, it could be our enrollment. So our enrollment wasn't as high as it was the year before. We already know that that is true. All all those things add, it could be grants. Maybe we had a few more grants in 1819 than we have in 1920. But bottom line is through May, we have less dollars coming in in apportionment than we did last year. Our salaries and benefits also play a part in that. So of course, we're paying more salary and benefit in 1920 than we were in 1819. And saying, and our local levy dollars, I did look at those two numbers also. 1819 through May, we received 6.375, almost 6.376 million dollars through May, and this year, 6.949. So we're right on track with our levy dollars, and I'm really thankful for our community and how diligent they are to make sure that they are paying their taxes to help support all of us in the community that depend on those local levy dollars. So that one was great. Moving on to capital projects. So you can see the total Indian Fund balance in capital projects is quite large, and that is because we have our June 1st payments, and then that will all come out of there and and be paid to our obligations that we have out out there. Same with debt service fund. All of it in May, all of the transfers and things are all in place. And then in June, then you'll see that they're all scooped up and and paid towards our debt. ASB, so it's been really weird with COVID. There hasn't been a lot of ASB things going on. And that was one of the things that Larry had asked me is there were like, I don't know, four or five different invoices that we paid that were ASB, and he wondered what they were. And so as you know, as we get closer to the end of the school year, you know, there's some things that the kids really wanted to celebrate and 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 different things that they want to do for year end activities. And so they were able to, I know Sean Omira, he got a big order of T-shirts together really quickly, and that was one of them. And so that all of the student body could have T-shirts. And there were a few other things so that I know if you were in the big parking lot, and they had the the great big blow up wolf that you could like go through. And unless there's lots of kids and lots of things going on, and it was a lot of fun. So a lot of those ASB things have been for that. But other than that, it's been really quiet in ASB. That that's one of the COVID, I guess, trip ups, if you will, Larry, is that, you know, the kids are usually really really on target for, you know, raising money and then spending on the things that they have planned through the year. And you can see from the ASB budget status report that our revenues are at 29.27%. And expenditures are at 40.75%, which is not really reflective of what it would normally be at the end of a school year. So it's it's sad, and I'm glad they got to do the things they got to do for the end of the school year. Our transportation vehicle fund is at $398,000. And coming up here, depreciation will And coming up here, depreciation will get popped into that. And then we will have some funds sitting there so that if there's any buses next year that need to be replaced, then Rich can put those orders in. And then we have money in this fund to put towards new buses. I have a couple notes, let's see. Oh, I wanted to give you just a quick update. I know you have a lot of things, a quick update on our budget. And I know that's one of the one of the things, and I don't know if that's somewhere else on the agenda, but I'll I'll just do it. I'll give you a quick update. So, of course, you know, the biggest part is getting our HR budget in line so that I can bring it over to the fiscal side, and then it all gets moved over to OSPI. So, right now, Valerie's worked on it, payroll has worked on it. And it's sitting right at about $36 million. And that's a rough estimate. There's still many things that need to be cleaned up on it. And that's similar to last year where you put everything in so you don't forget anything. And then, once you see it and it's so far over the hill, then you go back and you start trimming and and what things are in here that don't really belong here. But right now, we need to make sure we pull everything over. So, it's sitting at about $36 million for salary and benefits for all employees. As far as the fiscal side of the budget, I do have to apologize. I have been out a lot with my mom who is on hospice care. And so, the secretaries have been very patient, waiting for their building budget templates. And I pushed one out to Darcy today and said, look it over, make sure it's good enough so you can get me your budget numbers. And I can put in, start putting in the fiscal side. So, that's kind of where we are right now in our budget building process. We'll have everything printed and to the ESD for a first look by July 10. And then the ESD will push it back to me so I can continue to work on it and get it to where it needs to be before we have our August workshop and board meeting. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Darlene. Any any questions from the from the floor, from the board? Okay, great, hearing none. So, I would like, I know we still have a quite a bit left to cover. Dr. Clark, you're up next. But the chair would like to request a five-minute recess. So, we're running a little long today. And so, if we could take five minutes, and what time do we have, 7:34? Be back at 7:39. Is that okay with everyone?
Sounds good.
All right, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, everyone. Just do a quick roll call, make sure all board members are back. Director Ku?
Here.
Director Jeffries?
Here.
Director Pickens?
I am here, thank you.
Director Stoffer? Director Stoffer not back yet? Calling Director Stoffer, are you back yet?
Maybe you got a better offer.
Apologize, I'm back.
Okay, there we go. All right. Okay, Dr. Clark, you are up.
Well, thank you, Director Gibson. I just, my report is relatively brief, but I would ask the board to hearken back to a year ago today. Or actually, technically, it's a year ago tomorrow. And that's when I interviewed for this position. And I hope I have fulfilled your expectations, at least partially, if not fully. I I'm not one, I kind of one of the big believers in, I shouldn't have to tell you what I've done. You should know that. But I do want to make one one special point. Following Darlene's budget presentation, if nothing else, I can tell you our legal bills have plummeted. And so, I will leave it at that in regards to the past year. Thank you for the comments about OPA's graduation. I enjoyed it as well. In regards to this week's graduation, there's there's still a few things they need to button up. And I I will get with the board and and with the parameters. I'm waiting on some feedback from Dr. Unthank. We had a conversation today, our second meeting, in regards to the reopening of schools and some hashing out of the draft that we got from Superintendent Reichdahl. And some of it involved more questions than answers. And we're, our superintendent's group, Olympic Education Service District, our 4 o'clock conference call on Wednesday, we'll have Superintendent Reichdahl on it. So, we'll be able to ask some questions. I want to emphasize something Director Jeffrey said a few minutes ago. I do think we have some policy work to do. We put some things in the back burner. And I'm hoping on July 27, if we can revisit some of the policies we've kind of done some work on and not enough. I'm hoping that board workshop will pan out and maybe perhaps be live or close to live. We also, next week, I don't see it on the agenda, Tracy, or at the end, we have a board workshop on the 24th in regards to the EPNO levy and the capital projects levy. I sent you a first draft of some of our, if we do choose to run a capital projects levy, some of the things that, in speaking with John McCandy, some of the work that needs to get done. One of the things, I talked a little bit about this in my board note. And we've we've addressed this issue in a couple other scenarios. But one of the things in regards to the equity and the racial justice statement, if we need, if we want to do that and we want to live by that, we have to hold people accountable to those things. And one of the things that this district is sorely missing are cameras and the ability to recognize things that go on in the hallways and the parking lots. And when we talk about a capital projects levy, that is one of the big things that needs to happen in this district. I know there was an incident in the hallways, I want to say three years ago, it may have been four, where there was a statement posted on a bulletin board or whatever that was very derogatory. And I and I spoke with the administrators that were involved in trying to research who did it. And they, with the, without having cameras and without being able to prove certain things, they, while they did great work trying to figure it out, they were unable to do that. And that's one of the things that's pretty important to me that, and I'll echo you, Director Gibson, when you talk about, we do not condone racism of any way, shape, or form. Well, there are times that those things bubble up. And I wish they wouldn't. But when they do, the fact that we could have cameras and come to clear definition of who's violating that that policy and who's showing poor judgment is very helpful to our situation. And the rest of my report really is going to kind of be down when we talk about the reopening of schools. And I have a few comments about that. But that's all I have for right now.
All right, thank you.
When we have an item that's taken off the consent agenda, it is the first item that is on the new board business.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification. All right, so back to item 5.05, I believe it was, that we moved off of the out of consent agenda to regular agenda regarding the personnel, personal classified and certified staff.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if this is where Robert's rules apologists would come into play, but would it require a motion to begin to discuss?
I would believe that that would be the case.
Okay, in that case, I will move to approve as presented item 5.05.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second. But Director Jeffries?
Okay, great. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the approval for the classified and certified list there. So, we have it up on the board at this time. And I will open that up to discussion. I will, so we can start with Director Pickens, if he'd like to start that discussion. Brought the motion forward.
Thank you. And I guess with part of this, part of the discussion, I think we were able to ask questions as well. And I think that the first, and I think the question would go to Dr. Clark. But I was, and I, and to be clear, and I'm not sure how we'll handle this procedurally, but I don't have any, there are two items under that agenda item. One is just the the moves. And so, I don't have any concerns over that, the certificated and the classified. So, no concerns over that. It's mainly the other item. And I saw that it was a ratification of the district's action. And I know I brought this up at a previous, I believe I brought it up in an agenda setting meeting about the the previous resolution that the board took back on May, May 11, I believe. And as I look through that resolution, I was, I, that resolution is all about certificated staff. So, I wasn't sure if if the ratification is supposed to follow the resolution. And if so, if we could clarify whether or not there was a resolution about classified staff. Because everything in the resolution that passed on May 11, I went through the whole thing, it all references certificated staff. So, I was hoping Dr. Clark could could clarify that possibly.
Yes, you're you're correct in regards, because we have a statutory obligation to have that budgetary thing. I probably think that this this document that has been being presented by the HR department is more in tune with what was, what's been presented as far as far as the spreadsheet that we, that accompanied the resolution and that we have indicated that we needed to lay off other employees. But you are correct in regards to the resolution only spoke directly to certificated individuals.
Okay, and to take to take this action regarding the classified, classified, there, so if I'm understanding correctly, a a resolution per se isn't 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 required then to take this particular action, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I I think the the main reason I wanted to to make, you know, for the same reasons that I articulated on May 11. you know, for the same reasons that I articulated on May, um, 11th about, um, the, uh, certificated staff and wanting to, uh, or believing that our ending fund balance could keep those folks whole even for a, for a one-year period until attrition could, could take care of it. That would be the same reason why I would, um, would not nest, be in favor, especially during, during COVID and not knowing how many, how many of these folks we could potentially need in the fall, since we haven't finalized our, our, all of our plans in the fall. I, um, I think that, um, that we should, should keep these individuals, uh, employed. And I think that our ending fund balance will, can support that. So that's, uh, that's all.
Well, it, I respectfully disagree with your assessment that, uh, our ending fund balance can support this. And, um, I, I, um, in fact, if you want to know personally, I'm more concerned about our budget now than I was three weeks ago or four weeks ago, whenever that happened. Uh, I'm, I'm concerned about how the, uh, the state at this point in time is going to count FTE if we go into a hybrid model. I'm concerned about what our actual enrollment is going to look like. I'm hoping that it is somewhere near the number we've budgeted for. But with all of those, uh, unknowns, I, I believe it's the correct action to take, you know, albeit, uh, tough. But I, I do not think our budget can support having these employees on the payroll. Now, all that being said, is there a potential that some of them could get asked back? Yes, there is. Is there a potential that all of them that would get ba- asked back? No, there isn't. So one of, one of my obligations as the superintendent of schools is I am, along with Darlene, the primary fiduciary officer of this district. And I believe it is unwise to not lay off these people.
Understood. Um, could I, could I ask another, Mr. Chair, could I ask another question to Dr. Clark?
Uh, yes, you can.
Okay. Um, as there's not a, we're not bound by the same May 15th deadline with classified employees. And I, I do respect what you said about, um, there being some questions about how the fall will look and how things are funded. Are there, um, are there significant? I know, I know there's potentially some downsides to the actual affected employee with delaying. But are there, are there other downsides or upsides to potentially delaying this action?
The, uh, with, with almost all of these employees, we're, we're obligated to give 30-day notice.
Okay.
So, um, and that is, um, when we would do that, uh, there's not, you know, there's not a May 15th deadline like there is for certificated individuals, but we do have to give a 30-day notice.
Okay.
And, uh, that's what, what our CBAs say.
All right. Thank you for that.
Yeah. And I would allude to what your, uh, kind of beginning part of that statement would be too, is just, uh, the downside from the, um, individual standpoint is, I mean, if, if we are making this, uh, um, decision, then, um, you know, the, the, the more time they have to, for preparation for whatever they need to do, uh, would be my thoughts as well. But, uh, um, yeah. Any other thoughts from the, uh, from the floor? From the board?
Uh, Mr., yeah, Mr. Chair, just a couple of thoughts is, um, first, it just acknowledging my, this would have been a comment in the consent agenda, had it, uh, remained there, just acknowledging the, um, the unfortunate reality, as I believe it is, um, has been communicated by the, uh, superintendent. And I, I, I don't mean to pitch this into a political lit, or through a political lens, but you know, obviously we're, we're going to be going back to our community, seeking resources, uh, you know, for moving forward. And this is one of the many things I'm going to hearken to, uh, because with a family as small as ours in the district or as a district family, uh, 11 pair educators is, that, that's a big cut. And, you know, the others as well. So I'm reluctant, uh, to do this because it's just, there's nothing about this that is at all enjoyable. Um, I am prepared to vote in favor of the motion, um, just because of our CEO's recommendation. But I don't, I don't do it lightly. And then I, I want to capstone that too, with my gratitude for Director Pickens for pulling this out, not only to ask his questions, but I think it's, it's also showcasing, uh, what I think is a good practice of shining light on the uncomfortable components of this position, uh, and what we have to do. So as we continue to build trust in our community, um, these are the hard conversations that, um, I think we need to be having. So thank you for doing that.
All right. Um, Director Jeffries, anything?
No, I, I have the, um, the number of pair educators is alarming. I realize maybe necessity from a financial, uh, from an educational point of view, those parent education, paraprofessionals are very, very important in the, um, in the classroom to the kids and to the teachers. So it's, um, I hope that we can restore as many of those as possible. Given, um, but realizing the financial situation, no, we can't make any promises and that's unfortunate. Thank you.
Right. Director Stoffer.
Thank you. Uh, I agree with that, uh, the pairs play a vital role in the education. Very helpful in all the classrooms, uh, but we do have a fiscal responsibility and, uh, we don't know what September is going to look like whatsoever right now. And there's a, I know there's a budget projection out on the 17th or expected out on the 17th of what, and that's a projection, but we don't know. So, uh, I would be voting in favor of this, but I appreciate Director Pickens for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just, just another question that I don't think was answered, just, and this, I guess this is more of a procedural question where there are two items. This, I mean.
That, yep.
Okay.
Yep. So I, I, that was going to be my next direction is, um, uh, since there are two items on this and, and it sounds like there's a concern with one, um, I guess the question would be, do I have a motion to, uh, separate those items? Into individual, uh, 5.05A and 5.05B?
Yes. This is Director Stoffer. I, um, motion is to separate those two items A and B as presented.
I would second that.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any discussion on that? All right. Uh, feel, uh, hearing none. All those in favor of, uh, the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign? Okay. So with that said, let's go, uh, first off, we have, um, where are we at here? Looking at these. So we have the, uh, certified personnel, which is the, um, ratification and, um, the, the, the hiring and transfer, uh, document. So we'll address that one here first. Uh, so if we have a motion to approve on that item.
So moved. Second.
All right. So we got a motion and a second. So this is on, um, the certificated personnel, um, the, uh, that, that piece. Uh, any discussion on that one? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign? Okay. That passes. Uh, next up, we have the document on the, uh, um, classified personnel. Motion to, uh, um, need a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
Okay. So. All right. Motion carries for one. Thank you, uh, Director Pickens for bringing that forward and asking those questions. So we appreciate it. And again, just as in our other prior decisions, uh, these are not easy, easy decisions. And, uh, hopefully the future will look a little better down the line.
Yeah. And Mr. Chair, if I might, can I just add one piece? I just, just want to reiterate that I, 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 I want to thank Dr. Clark for, uh, for being so concerned about where we're at financially. And I, I, it's not something that I disregard. So just my thank you to Dr. Clark for being vigilant about it as well. So I don't, thank you.
All right. Great.
Thank you, Director Pickens. And I, I kind of why, I, I, I didn't get this in, but I want to be clear about something. Cause first of all, when you see the number 11, it's actually a little bit greater than that because that's FTE. And usually one para does not equal one FTE. Part of the large number is this. It stems from language in their collective bargaining agreement that says the tiebreaker is the date of hire. Well, last year we, and these are all paras who were hired either last year or after the year started. And 12, we had 12 paras hired on August 21st or something like that. So there was no way to really place, uh, uh, tiebreaking material in there. So I'm, so we made the decision, and I'm going to say I made the decision to riff every one of them because of the inability to enact any tiebreakers. So I'm going to tell you that some of them will be rehired, but not all of them. And so there was, I, I, I don't know that I would call it an anomaly, but fairly close to that.
Yep. Understood.
All right. Great. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Dr. Clark. Okay. Moving on. So next up, we have the approval of the high school math adoption.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think we've already been presented with this, so I would move to approve as presented.
I'd like to second that.
Yes, we have. Yes. And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that?
Just appreciate, uh, Ms. Arms, excuse me, comment, uh, to the board. Uh, that was helpful and appreciate all the hard work on the staff for doing this. Um, it's a, it's a world that I don't delve into very often, but I recognize the talent and the, uh, the commitment that goes into reviewing and, uh, ultimately recommending a curriculum.
Absolutely.
Just also to echo that, love the, the collaborative, uh, collaborativeness of the, the decisions being made on it.
Okay. Uh, with that said, uh, all those in favor of adoption of the math curriculum, uh, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign? All right. Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have the approval of the middle school ELA adoption, which we had that presentation as well, same evening.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Just echo what was already been said. I, I, I love the collaboration and that there's buy-in from, from, from staff on, on this direction.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ditto.
All right. Uh, with no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign? All right. Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have the approval of the school improvement plans and, um, I know in some cases, uh, you know, this, this, the whole, uh, COVID-19 and, and our restrictions and issues with, uh, having to work in a virtual environment have, um, really hindered, uh, some of our presentations. Uh, I know, uh, Dr. Clark probably have something to add to this as well, but, uh, you know, this, these, these plans have to be approved by the 30th. We've seen many of them. There's a couple that we haven't had an opportunity to fully see. And, and typically these are when we do our, uh, visits out to the, out to the, uh, actual schools and get to hear a little bit about what's going on there and then their SIP as well. And, um, uh, you know, unfortunately this has put us kind of in a situation, uh, this time, under another time constraint. But, um, uh, Dr. Clark, I'll, I'll, uh, turn it over to you if you have anything to add there.
And I, that's, that's a good way to frame it. Director Gibson, I, I think it's important that when SIP plans are presented, that they are presented live and in person, uh, with multiple staff members, even if possible. And there, there, the questions can flow a lot better than they can. I don't like this situation. On the same token, uh, I, I think, uh, you know, because of our policy and, uh, we need to have these approved by June 30th with the COVID situation. I think some of these buildings would be hard pressed to say they enacted it 100%. I do know that the buildings that did not present to the board will be first on the agenda as we start school in September or Oct- or, or in October. I asked for the board's approval of these through the written documents. And I know that you did see some of them. You saw, uh, but I asked for the approval of all of them with, under the condition that you will see these, the whites of their eyes on, in September or October.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve as recommended by our executive.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
That is the Director Jeffries. I think, I really think the school improvement plans are very, very important. I know the staffs worked very hard on them and, uh, I think it's beneficial to the kids that they make sure and we make sure that they're followed through. The process leaves me a little cold. Um, we need, we're asked to approve some of these plans several weeks, months after they've been presented to us. I would prefer in the future that we, um, in order to approve that they, um, present their plan, give us a chance to, uh, express our positives and concerns and questions and give them the chance maybe to come back and, uh, clarify, sell their, their plan to us or actually change their plan. And then we could improve, you know, approve them like the next meeting or the meeting after that. Um, so that, uh, that gives me some great concern. Also, some of the plans were better than others as far as achievement gaps. I was looking at some of the requirements and, um, plans to improve any disparities or achievement gaps and ways to get to the state's stated goals of 90% on, at least on the, uh, on the testing. I know the testing's been thrown in a, a tizzy because of COVID and, uh, it makes it more complicated. But, uh, I don't, as a former educator, and I guess that's where it hits me in, in taking ed leadership, graduate level ed leadership courses. Um, I find that I'm not sure educationally sound to put the approval all the way to the end. So we've seen all, all of the plans. all of the plans is the best plan. So it's um, it's something we need to adjust for next year, I, I think, or at least discuss it to find out if there's a, to handle these school improvement plans. Cause I think they're very important and I'm not sure we're giving them as a board, they're just justification, just do. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Director Stoffer.
Yeah.
Um, I know there's a date um, that's tied into this, that the date that these have to be submitted to OSPI. And um, it'd be good to have the clarity on that, when exactly that is, and then maybe um, we can look at the policy to adjust that or refine that. Uh, but it is, these plans are very important and uh, we as a board have a duty responsibility to look over them and provide the feedback and if we have concerns and so that's where I, I do agree with Director Jeffries of uh, um, at the end of the year, trying to uh, go back and go to, I think it was the high school was the one, the first one that rolled out this year. And, and then it is difficult here with the um, virtual reviewing those, but I will say that Gray Wolf, that was a, a great presentation that we had a, a month ago. Thank you though for all these, all this work.
Thank you, uh, Director Stoffer. Anything else?
Yeah, I'll just pile on too with the observation by Director Jeffries. Um, and not his words, but mine, just kind of the clunkiness around the process of how we improve these, uh, or excuse me, approve these and the interface with the board. Um, you know, and I understand the history and the, the temporal bookends that we have to adhere to, but this hearkens back to a couple of conversations I'd had with prior board members, uh, past presidents. So uh, appreciate you ringing that bell, Director uh, Jeffries and um, I agree, there's probably, not there's probably, there is fine tuning that can be done to ensure uh, maximum efficacy of this process with the SIPs. Uh, but also appreciate the tremendous work that went into all these and uh, as Dr. Clark said, and looking forward to seeing the whites of the eyes of uh, the individuals we haven't had a chance to hear from.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, this is, this is kind of an unfortunate clunky situation. Uh, but we do have a time restraint again and, and uh, and, and definitely uh, could, one of those areas that, that can use some improvement um, as we, as we move forward. Okay. Uh, with that said, uh, with no further discussion, um, uh, look, uh, all those in favor of approval of the self-improvement plans signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? All right, motion carries. All right. Next up, we have first reading of policy 6106 allowable costs for federal programs.
This is a new policy and this is directly related to the COVID funds from the care, from the care program that we uh, will receive from the federal government. And this is just how we manage and if you uh, federal funds uh, recommended by WASDA to, for approval.
All right. Okay, thank you. So this is just first reading, so we'll see this um, next next meeting for approval.
I, I just want to be clear a little bit about uh, the COVID funds. I talked about them today in the reopening conversation. We will get that $700,000. But it is unclear about the potential of whether the legislature may clause some of that back. This hearkens back to what Director Pickens said a few minutes ago in regards to, we need to be vigilant and diligent in regards to upcoming legislation that uh, deals with these figures, so. Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, next up, we have the next uh, 60, well, 6101, federal cash and financial management.
Directly related to the previous policy.
Yep, so another new policy directly related to that. And we will see this uh, next meeting um, for approval. Okay. We have two last items um, on our agenda here. Uh, first up, we have our WASDA annual conference discussion. So I think part of that is really just uh, determining uh, kind of options on, so this will be in Spokane?
Yes.
Um, this year. Uh, there will be virtual options for uh, for attending as well. Um, as well as uh, physical rooms. Um, which may at some point be changed. I guess that would be the big question is, you know, if we do book rooms and that get changed, how does that handle? But uh, I'm su-, I'm sure that would be a done in some manner um, under that process on, just like the uh, the cruise that I was supposed to take in September that isn't happening. So I guess, uh, what, what kind of information do we need at this point, Dr. Clark?
Well, I, I guess I kind of want to make a point about um, you know, when it goes without saying that we've had some, that we're going through a significant budget crisis. And I think it's important that we uh, do attend and that board members have training and get professional development. But I also know that if we can, if some of us can attend this conference virtually, that's a significant, that is a savings to the district. So um, I do, I, I do want each individual board member, the money will be put in the budget. But I, I do want each individual uh, board member to think about, do they need to go? Can they attend virtually? How is that going to work? Because the, you know, the cost for virtual attendance is the same as the regular attendance. And, and I also know that on speaking not, you know, for WASDA, I know this is, this is a real uh, big, and I don't want to say fundraiser, but this is how they get a lot of their revenue. And you know, the cost when we go to Spokane for the hotel and flights or, or driving is, it ma-, makes this conference pretty expensive, you know, if, and so I, I, I want board members to recognize that we're all taking a little bit of a hit.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's a valid point and especially in light of some of the uh, budgetary decisions we've had to make recently as well. Um, important for us all to all do our part.
Tracy, what's our timeframe for hotels and things like that? Are you going to book them and then if we have to uh, cancel? Is that what you're looking at?
In the past, they haven't allowed us to book unless we've registered. So it's a really important that we get a, a good idea. Um, who's going to attend so I can move forward? And yes, we would cancel if that was the case.
What's that timeline like, Tracy, for uh?
As soon as possible, I would say uh, by the end of the month at the latest.
Okay.
So they, Director Stoffer, they typically will refund the, the conference registration up till uh, the, right at the last. Um, it's the rooms that uh, there's usually then a late fee type thing, but uh, I think it would be who, us to go, those that uh, are inclined to attend, to at least get the registration, so then it, it uh, um, it doesn't delay Tracy's work um, in that process.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Um, this is, I really appreciate you uh, ringing the bell on this and especially in regard to the budgetary um, reality that we're facing and I wholeheartedly agree with the superintendent um, in the spirit of practice, what you preach, so to speak. Um, my, my struggle is um, and I've spoken with some of y'all in the past about how valuable I find uh, this particular conference, uh, the legislative as well, but if I had to put my chips in on one, it would be this one. And there are a lot of um, intangibles um, that come from, you know, the, the entire board attending together uh, that we've enjoyed in the past, but I uh, wholeheartedly agree that those uh, potentially could be uh, sacrificed uh, for budgetary constraints. Um, I guess one thing that may be helpful, and Tracy, you're going to roll your eyes when I say this, is in the past, I have recognized the uh, uh, the absolute benefit of staying uh, on venue or at venue um, of the conference and that was a, that was a huge um, boon in terms of um, you know, ease and efficiency uh, the last year we attended this. Uh, but perhaps um, you know, in addition to the virtual attendance, uh, some idea of what different um, venue or hotel options may include. Um, if, if that can help uh, make a meaningful impact on the budget. Um, if, if that's, if that's too much work to ask, I totally understand as well, but the, the intent of bringing this forward is uh, is not lost on me and I appreciate you all doing so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
The only thing I, I would add is just particularly as a, as a new member to the board, the um, I, I did find uh, the, the, the conference to be extremely valuable and us being in a position to um, to serve. Um, I think that um, it i-, it is important and I'm very, very torn on it. And when I think of budget constraints and that, that sort of thing, it's, 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 it is a tough decision. However, I'm sort of also am considering that I, I feel like budget constraints um, aren't really ever going to go away or not in the immediate future, although I do want to, I do want to fight to get in uh, more, get us to a place where we have more sustainable um, education funding statewide, but um, I, that the value of, of, of this training is, is very significant from my perspective as a, as a new board member, so that's, that's kind of where I'm, where I'm torn there. So I'm a little curious about what the virtual um, virtual aspects will be and if we can still um, maximize the benefit through that method or not. So I think further discussion, maybe research might be, uh, might be required, but those are my thoughts.
Okay.
That is Director Jeffries.
Yeah.
I attended the WASDA 2019. Probably one of the best conferences I've ever attended in my whatever 40 years in uh, education. So I, you know, I highly recommend attending in person, however, this is going to be an unusual year and given the unknowns. We know they're going to be unknowns and all that, whatever that phrase goes on, so that makes it tough. And from what I've seen so far from WASDA, I'm very impressed with the time and effort and expertise they put into their virtual meetings and hopefully that would show up in their virtual conferences, conferences and um, so it, it uh, but I, I would encourage all of us to make some kind of decision pretty quickly so that Tracy can get to work on that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Director Stoffer.
Yeah.
Um, I'll just say for myself that uh, yes, I uh, um, would want to attend and if uh, um, if I need to cover it under my own personal funds, I, I can do that. It's um, extremely valuable to have the opportunity to meet with our colleagues around the state. And this is one of the, the only opportunities, you know, we have our regional meetings, but we didn't uh, our regional meeting was uh, not held this year um, because of COVID and uh, we don't know what fall we'll bring. I, I do know that WASDA is doing a great deal of work and um, formatting this between the two. Uh, but um, I'll just now go on record that I will, uh, I would like to attend and that can, if Tracy could go ahead and register me for it.
All right, great. Thank you. Um, yeah, I, just uh, my last two cents so we can move on. Uh, but if, you know, definitely let's get our uh, request over to Tracy as, as soon as possible. Uh, let's shoot for um, by the end of this week. Uh, I, I've attended two of the conferences, but I only, I only attended the ones in Seattle. I did not attend the one in Spokane uh, two years ago. Yeah, part of that is just from a professional basis as well and the, and these are extremely important meetings, but uh, it, it um, also requires me to take um, additional vacation time for travel from my, from my job, because I cannot mix the two uh, as well. And uh, I, I, on a personal note, although I do love attending them, um, probably would lean more towards the virtual um, op-, option myself uh, um, and, and not going in attendance, so uh, that's my thoughts. So yeah, so please, uh, if you could uh, make, make your decision and get, and get that over to uh, Tracy um, within this week, it would be appreciated. Okay, lastly, uh, we just have one last discussion, how far we want to go into this, but as we're pushing 8:30 at this point, but um, our reopening planning guide discussion.
Well, I just want to say we had our second meeting today. We have committee chairs. We're going to meet again in two weeks. I, 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 you know, for Superintendent Reigdahl and the committee that put this together, I think it's a great start. I, I don't envy their jobs in any way, shape or form, but I, I, I do believe that there's a little bit of contradiction between what you read in the newspaper and what you hear in regards to schools will be open. And then you read the fine print and it's, we, we will not be able to open full tilt. And I, I don't know what other verbiage you want to use. We will have to use some type of hybrid. Will there be students in our brick and mortar buildings on September 1st? Yes, there will. Will there be 100% of our students? No, there won't. So uh, we're working our way through all those requirements and, and the, the main requirements are health and safety and, and we recognize that. Um, I think we're going to have to come up with, with a hybrid model that, you know, a, a percentage of our students come to school, whether it be every other day or five days this week and then get virtual learning the next week. But we have our work cut out for us and uh, um, I know we're up to the task. I know we can do it. But we, there's still some questions we need to have answered. And uh, one of the big questions is that, how many people can we get on a bus? And uh, I know that doesn't speak directly to that, but it does speak to social distancing in the classroom and on campus. It's vague on what social distancing would look like on a bus. And we, we have to get clear um, definitions about that. I know we're going to be spending a, a great deal of money uh, on PPE and, and getting the buildings up and functional during this, this uh, fall. So that's kind of where I'm at. Again, I, I still think, even though this is a good start, I still think there are a lot of questions out there. I've read the document twice. Uh, health and safety, I've probably read six times. Health and safety, I've probably read six times. I still need to read it a couple more times to fully digest it.
All right. Well, well, thank you and thanks to the, the team at the district as well that, for, for the work that they're working on, on this is you know, all new to all of us and we'll see, see what this amounts to in the end. Any questions or thoughts out there from the board before we close?
Chair, this is Director Stoffer.
Yeah.
Superintendent, could you share the PowerPoint to the board that, that you presented at the meeting today? Was that, was extremely helpful. I didn't download it so that that could be shared to my colleagues.
Tracy, do you have that? Tracy will bring it up.
Well, maybe if we could just send that out.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just send that out to view. That would be great.
So it's six or seven slides.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Good. Just, just want to, want to thank Dr. Clark for, and I know that we'll, we'll make the, the health and safety of our, our students and staff a priority. So I know that's not a easy process, but it's thanking him for being vigilant and on this and as we, as we sort through it and I know we have our, a lot of parents out there that are looking for, you know, some, hopefully a plan and some consistency. And I know that's not, it's not an easy process. So want to, want to thank Dr. Clark as well as, as everybody that's going to be involved in this planning. So I know it's tough work.
Absolutely. Thank you, Director Pickens. Anybody else? All right.
There's my mute, just, sorry. Just to say thank you as well. Obviously there's as many opinions as people in the room about the right approach to what we do in the fall. I made a semi foolhardy mistake of posing a question on social media, which I'll forward y'all if you hadn't seen the responses, as would be prudent, but there's mixed opinions about this. This isn't an easy call. I do appreciate OSPI's work and Dr. Clark and team for how y'all are assessing what's the best fit for Squim. So appreciate you putting this on the agenda. It should definitely be a high priority topic in the weeks ahead.
Absolutely. Yep, thank you. All right, with that, thanks for all the work tonight, everybody. A lot of work went on this evening, a lot of discussion and appreciate all of your, your time and effort. Thank you to those that stuck it out through the whole meeting in attendance and with that, we will call the meeting to closure. Thank you, everyone. Reminder, we don't meet again until the, what is that?
July 6th, or July 20th?
No, July 20th. Yes, we don't have a July 6th meeting.
Okay.
Yep. But we do, we do have a couple of upcoming, we have a workshop on the 24th for the EPNO Capital Projects, 4:30 to 6:30. So we'll be meeting with that.
Oh, good. I'm glad we moved to have y'all handle the letter then, especially.
Yeah.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
Yes, most definitely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you. Good meeting.